Okay, we will call ourselves officially to order. And I'll ask for an adoption of our agenda.
I make the motion.
Okay, and you've said that it's been.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
No, it's okay. So, uh, did you get that, Jamie? Okay, and is, are we all in agreement? Is it unanimous?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, the motion, I mean, the agenda has been adopted. Um, do we have any public comments?
We do not.
We do not.
Do we chat? No public comments.
No.
No, okay, so we will move on to the consideration of the minutes from our special meeting and public hearing held on June twenty third. Gosh, it seems like we didn't make what you want. Anyway, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Certainly.
Okay. So, they were approved as read. Uh, we don't have a public hearing tonight because it wasn't needed. It will stay on our agenda where you see it, so that we do need one, it's in, it's in place. Um, now, where is Phil Tru?
He's up here.
Hey, Phil. Um, we're going to, how are you?
Fine, thank you. How are you?
We are, we're, we're glad to have you join us and give us the, uh, the GSI storm warning mapping. So, we'll. We'll now hear from you, please.
Okay, thank you all very much. Uh, I'd had some conversations with Heather over the past few months about stormwater issues in the town. Most recent discussion kind of came up because of the smoke testing we're all doing on the sewer system and finding some, uh, interconnections between the stormwater system and sewer system. So, uh, the timing is pretty fortunate because there is a grant program from the State Department of Environmental Quality that is available to councils and governments to water quality planning. And one of the eligible uses of those grants is to do stormwater mapping. Heather and I talked about having a accurate, detailed map of your stormwater infrastructure would be a good first step in addressing future stormwater problems. So, um, want to talk tonight about us applying for that grant and what we'd do with it if we were successful. Um, if, if we get the grant, we would map the stormwater system that we can just go now, having our staff, Jessica Welber, uh, come to Burnsville, it'd take about twenty days, field time, but she would cover the entire town limits and capture accurate mapping of all the culverts, the inlets, the outlets, catch basins, major ditch lines, swales, and, uh, produce hard copy and digital copy maps of your whole stormwater system. She would need to be accompanied by someone from the town to, um, help show her, identify some of those features and lift grates, stormwater grates where needed to look down into the catch basins and for traffic control where needed. Um, we'd apply for about eleven thousand dollars from the state for that. We would need a match from the town of three thousand, three hundred ninety-eight dollars. We could apply by, we have to apply by September eleventh and typically know something by the end of November. Uh, if we were successful and y'all wanted to proceed, we would, it would probably take the whole calendar year to conduct the mapping. Uh, we've been mapping, helping our towns with water and sewer and stormwater mapping for our town. We've got good hardware and software and strong capability to do that. We've mapped five of our town's stormwater systems and about fifteen of our town's water and sewer systems. And we maintain that data for most of those towns. So, um, we're always on the lookout for grants to help our local governments. We feel this is a good one, pretty timely with what the, uh, smoke testing y'all have been doing has identified as problems with inspections from storm drainage and gutters in the town sewer system.
Okay, so. So, we, I mean, obviously, there looks like we have a pressing deadline, uh, to me. And what you need is a, a motion to approve the matching, to do it and to, uh, provide the matching money, which again is how much?
Three thousand, three hundred ninety-eight dollars.
Okay. Um, any discussion or questions for Phil on this? Uh, it sounds like, I mean, I'm, I'm sure Dylan will approve, that would be very helpful, would it not, Dylan?
It would be very helpful.
Yes.
It may be well money.
Yeah, maybe well spent. So, is there a motion that we adopt, uh, his proposal and provide the, uh, required matching dollars? Thank you. Funny second, are we all in agreement?
Yes.
Okay, so it's unanimous. Thank you very much for bringing that to our attention for consideration and we, we approve wholeheartedly.
Thank you, and I'll work with Heather on, I'll work with Heather on the application and let you on that as soon as we find out.
That sounds like it's a deal. Thank you very much, Phil, appreciate your joining us this evening and stay with us as long as you like.
Okay, thank you.
Well, well, thank you. I hope I can see, I don't have my glasses on. Um, I'll just go out in a minute. Uh, let's see. I believe we are now going to go to, uh, Michelle Ball and, uh, I will, I will yield to you to report on, to give us your report, Michelle. We can't, we can't hear you.
Great, I can hear you too now.
Okay.
But what I have brought, what I've got before you today, uh, the first thing, uh, regards some CDBGI policies that need to be either updated and there are a couple that we need to actually adopt for the first time. Uh, and it's within regards to the still open Peterson Trailer Park project and the, uh, Indian Trail project. And these will also have an effect on any new CDBG. I know that the town's working on possibly putting a new, uh, application in. All of these, uh, policies can be used, uh, for that new project as well, as long as, uh, they're, they're good for three more years after, after today. But, uh, all of the plans, there should be nine, uh, nine different plans that you have in front of you tonight. Most of them are ones that were adopted in two thousand seventeen, uh, with the exception of the following. Um, now the town must adopt a conflict of interest policy that was not required in two thousand seventeen when the others were adopted. Um, the, uh, citizen participa, the citizen participation plan now has language to cover virtual meetings where it did not. Uh, that's very, that's, that's necessary in today's, uh, with, with, with things going on today. Um, and the fair housing assessment, there was no changes to the demographic part of that, but there were changes, uh, to the goals and to the, uh, there's been additional fair housing activities added to that plan to go through at least the, uh, Indian Trail project and actually a little bit past the Indian Trail. It will have to be adopted in and, uh, a new one might be needed if a new grant is, is, uh, is, if the, if the town gets a new grant, but other than that, that it should cover a new grant as well, at least it'll go through the Indian Trail project.
So.
Do you want me to go through, do you want me to go through each of the ones that need to be adopted? I've tried to provide, um, uh, a summary of what's on each one of them for you.
Yeah, you provided for us, I mean, there, you say there, is there eleven, is that correct?
Nine.
Nine, excuse me. There are nine, there are nine for us to approve?
Yes.
Okay, uh, I think you've given us, uh, you know, a couple of sentences per plan, uh, unless the board would like, maybe they have individual questions you would like to ask Michelle about, uh, any of these plans that she has presented to us?
I really want to make everything.
So, no individual questions? So, may, would you prefer that we approve them individually or as a group?
You could do it as a group, I think that would be the easiest way.
Okay, so, uh, is there, is there a motion to approve the, uh, what do you call these? The CDBGI, um.
Policy update.
Policy updates of the nine that have been presented?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, to approve all of them, is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, so is it unanimous?
Yep.
Okay, so we are in agreement to approve all of them, uh, Michelle. Stay with me. So, they, they're all approved, um, so I guess then you can move on to the, uh, the Peterson Trailer Park?
Yes, this, I'm, um, I'm requesting that there be another public hearing at the September meeting to close this project out. We had one back in June and apparently, um, I had mentioned the wrong numbers when I did the, uh, the application. I forgot to include the amount that the town actually had to pay back. It was forty-seven, four thousand, seven hundred fifty-four dollars and twenty-seven cents. Because that number was, because that number was not included in the totals that I presented at the closeout public hearing, DEQ is requiring that we have another before they will close the project out.
Okay, so we're scheduling that for our, for the September third, uh, board meeting. So, you will be.
Correct.
We, are you going to be here with us or we just will zoom in?
Yeah, I will, I will, I will, I will try to be there and then that way I can answer any questions too, if there's any updates. But nothing's really changed and everything's the same, it's just, I did not include that total with the total project, uh, expenditures.
Okay, so we, we have that public hearing then scheduled for September the third board meeting. All right, so just want to remind the board members that there's no need to vote on it. We're, it's just, it will be on our agenda to have a public hearing. So, so we will see you, I guess, then.
Yep, I will, I will be there then and, uh, uh, I'm just trying to think, and, and is there any questions on, about that? I mean, I, and I can answer any questions, uh, in September as well.
Okay, does, do we, does anyone have any questions for Michelle? Okay, I guess there are no questions, so, uh, nice to have you join us this evening.
Thank you, I had a little bit of technical difficulty, but I did make it.
You certainly did, and thank you very much, we'll see you in September then.
Thank you very much. See you then.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much. Just falling apart, seeing this has come apart, let's see. Second going home. Judy, you're in charge. Okay, um, pardon me, let's see, let's move on. Uh, we'll move on now to, uh, to Dylan. So, we'll recognize you to give us your updates, please.
Jay, wanna? Twenty, okay, we'll start with the most pressing situation, the OMC pump station replacement, uh, now also includes the force main repair, which I think y'all are aware of. Um, so I'll give you a quick breakdown of what we encountered. So, we bid, the original project was funded by a zero percent, uh, DEQ loan was for eight hundred and six thousand dollars. Uh, that included replacement of the OMC pump station. And then we blended that with another project that was for the water plant work, which was three hundred and forty-some thousand dollars and included trying to build an equalization tank at the plant, uh, several improvements at the plant to make it operate more independently, have dual trains. Uh, we re, we bid that project twice, both times it came, the first time it came in roughly five hundred thousand dollars over. Second time, it was still two hundred thousand dollars over. And in trying to broker with DEQ, because the money comes from two different, it comes from the clean water side, which is sewer, and drinking water, which is water. Uh, the determination came down that we could not move, we had an excess of money in the sewer side and a shortfall in the water side. And they, those two agencies don't work together like that, so they would not let us move money from one to the other. So, and at that same time that came about, we entered into the value engineering with the contractor who was the low bidder, um, to eliminate the water plant work and build the pump station. Their negotiation did not go well, they still were charged, they, they wanted to increase their price seventy-five thousand dollars arbitrarily to just do the pump station. We did not feel that was accurate. Uh, they kind of cooked the numbers a little bit in their bid, so we decided to reject all bids. And at that same time, the force main failed, uh, under, under the four lane, and so now that's where the bypass pumping, what we're, situation we're currently in. Uh, at that time, Dylan and Heather contacted DEQ on the sewer side, said we would like to get funding, loan funding, grant, whatever we can to operate this bypass pumping and then replace the force main. So, uh, D, the sewer side agreed to do that. And that, now we stand with a revised total loan amount to include replacing just the pump station and the entire force main. Um, I provided a, a cost breakdown, that initial, initial loan, like I said, was eight oh six, four hundred, uh, based on cost estimates of the force main that Dylan and I worked together, worked with, uh, Hyatt Pipeline, who's now doing the Indian Trail since they're on site, and they did quite a bit of the repair, the emergency repair work we started with. We came up with a budget for construction for that of two hundred and five thousand dollars. And then, uh, there was a redesign, a design fee from us, a bidding, an award fee and construction administration. And then the town themselves, or yourselves, have paid almost to date a hundred and twelve thousand dollars in, uh, bypass hall, hall, hall and pump, bypass pumping before we could get the, uh, pumps in place. Then there's pump rental, which is still ongoing, um, and then some repair work for the four previous breaks that Hyatt fixed. Uh, they agreed to let us put all that money into this overall project funding. So, we came up with a new revised project amount of one point one seven million, basically an additional three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. When I put that together, I, I put in some, a, a new revised cost estimate for just the OMC pump station, uh, and new contingency. So, we know that's going to be a good solid cap for what money we need. Uh, the state approved that, Heather should be getting, or the mayor, Heather should be getting a signed reoffer of loan funding indicating that, we verified that, uh, earlier this week with the state. So, they're good to go. We've already advertised what we designed, got DOT approval, got, uh, DEQ sign off on the force main repair and have advertised the projects for bid, received bids. Uh, Hyatt Pipeline was the only bidder, it was an informal bid, so we only had to have one, which is a good thing, it was, you know, pushed the timeline forward quickly. Their bid amount was one roughly a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So, right off the bat, we're going to save seventy grand from what we estimated in the loan. Also going to save some contingencies, so that's a good thing.
What was in that scope with this new bid?
The new bid, so they're going to.
Just the pump station and, and everything?
No, the, the Hyatt Pipeline bid we have now, that's to replace the force main all the way to East Main Street, which some of that's already been replaced, we may even cut some of that out, but from a funding standpoint, we, it's like roughly nine hundred feet of, uh, force main. Uh, the big, the big dollar item is we have to bore under the road.
Right.
And I know some of you may know, but DOT kind of left us a little, the line was left under the road, so that's why we can't, we can't access to fix it just by opening trench. So, now we're going to have a bore of the entire four lane and a new line all the way into the pump station property. Um, which, we got a really good pricing on that. And, and, and they're here in town, he's ready to start work on Indian Trail at any point, we give the go ahead, we've already sent the notice of recommendation of award and bid tabs, so they're ready to go on it and hopefully can knock that out relatively quickly.
So, how, how much did they came under your?
Seventy thousand.
Okay, just, just that money that we could use to pay on the.
That's what I, that's why I'm so, and by setting that new amount, we now opened up some more contingency. Um, if bids come in higher on the pump station, my feeling is it's going to be much more attractive to a pipeline contractor because it's just a pump station, it doesn't involve anything to water plants. Um, so bids should be low, the price before was five seventy-five, was the bid price we got for the line item for that, but then they wanted to tack on that additional seventy-five, so all of a sudden it turned into sixty, which we could have possibly done, but did not think that was a fair expenditure of money. Uh, it just, there was no, it was an arbitrary number that they could not provide justification for.
It's up E's.
Yeah, yeah.
And Russell, he's got a hundred and twelve thousand in, uh, in this cost estimate built in for what we have extended.
Yeah, so no, yeah, that's.
So, that seventy is.
It's over the above.
Over and above.
In case, in case something catastrophic happens.
We're, we're still pumping, so.
We have to extend, we have to extend another month, right. Um, and then we also talked about the breakdown of like removal of those pumps and removal of the temporary HDP line. We can either have, add that via change order into Hyatt's contract, whatever that amount may be. My understanding is that item is just a sunk cost, it's your item. That, that was my understanding from Zalins, sort of from Goblin's story. Now, that may not be the case, they're taking advantage of that.
Okay, all right.
So, any, any disassembly costs, we can, we can get pricing from Hyatt, so that's built into that contingency as well. So, we should have a safe vote. And then hopefully bids on the pump station, once we are, uh, re-permitted, ready to advertise for bids at y'all's direction by now, that comes in under, so what I'm getting at is that one point one seven, I'm hoping, where some percentage, if it's a, another hundred thousand underneath that, but we have some fat built into that, that that ultimate loan amount will be lower. Um, because this, the force main is a bad situation, but it also, DEQ used some common sense and realized, hey, we need to get this fixed in total, not just a piece of time. Um, so, that's where we stand with the OMC force main and pump station. Um, hopefully the, the force main, I don't know how, what's going to be involved with that bore of the four lane, how successful or how long that's going to take, but he's saying maybe two weeks' time to have that in the ground, to be able to tie back into the existing pump station and stop the bypass. Because that's the big, that's the ongoing cost right now.
What is that, eight inch under that?
It's eight inch. So, right now, just for those of y'all that may, it's not really evident, there's a temporary line, a temporary eight inch line that runs, uh, along the creek and then through several box culverts and back through more box culverts and ties it in. So, luckily it's working and it's a heck of a lot cheaper than sixty thousand dollars that the town got charged for those trucks to run nonstop. But the, the ideal situation is that we get this underway, if we can, if y'all approve the recommendation of award, have them start either next week, week after next, depending on when they can get their bore contractor in. Um, and then advertise the pump station project. We put in some, we ran the force main all the way to the pump station and put a plug valve there, so it should make it a more seamless state when it come in. There's a place for them to tie in for bypass pumping if they have to and make, if it'll facilitate a little bit cleaner on the town's end, maintaining certified, the pump station's changed out. Have that contractor come in, hopefully if it's under, if it's, if it's in, within budget, have it start, you know, within the next two months.
Like you said, that, that should come in most less, or not most less, but it's less. Should be more attractive.
Yeah, and it's, it's a finite location, it's not building a concrete tank and then having a lot of, uh, working at the pump station and laying line down the side of the, the four lane, I mean, it's right here to get it fixed. I feel it's going to come in. The environment is also slightly better than it was when COVID first broke out. People are now kind of getting caught up a little bit, especially the utility side. Um, I, I think it, well, I know it's going to go this time, maybe just because we have a better budget for it.
I've got one question, Jay, um, on when, when we initially, and this has been, I guess, two thousand seventeen, we initially got that loan?
Yes, it's a seventeen project.
And there was, um, a twenty-five percent forgiveness on one side or the other.
So, that was the water.
That's the one.
I, I checked both, the sewer is zero percent.
Okay.
And the water was a twenty-five percent, uh, capital, yeah, principal forgiveness.
Yes.
So, we still have the water project, and that's what Dylan and I were talking about briefly. And we can talk about that, uh, further down the road, reshaping that to still use that money and.
So, the water money is still out there.
Exactly.
It's reserved for us when we're ready to, to move.
We've got some design tweaks and additions and additions to provide you a better product, uh, than what, uh, to provide you more usable water. It will fit within the three, I think that, that was three forty-seven was that amount. So, all we need now to start on the force main is approval of the recommendation of award. Um, and then, at that point, we've already sent the mayor a rec, a notice of award, once that's signed by y'all, the contractor can pull his bonds and insurance together, get the contract document signed and keep that off.
So, you'd like this tonight for us to approve the plan for the emergency repairs?
And I have a resolution, Madam Mayor, that's prepared, that has all that language in it.
Okay.
You're not only approving the notice of award and the signatures, any other things we need to be doing, but also what has been done today.
Okay.
Um, basically adopting this, this revised budget.
Okay.
All of those costs.
So, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion approved.
Okay, thank you, Russell, is there a second? Judy, second it? Do the rest of us agree? We certainly do, and.
Thank you all very much.
When you've been reporting.
I thank y'all for your patience.
Well.
I know this has been a tough time.
It has been.
With wastewater plant, force main, and trying to get this.
Took range of bores.
That's what I was going to say, it's been.
In the middle of a pandemic.
I, I think we're, we're, we're turning the tide to where we'll get something, something back.
Well, thank you for hanging in there with us, because we've been hanging in a lot lately. So, it saves.
That's, that's my job, y'all are my number one fellow. It's been my, my direct, so I appreciate your patience.
Okay, so the motion and the vote is, is unanimous, so I guess we're, we're ready for you to move with it.
Because it's in, it is in this.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we'll, we now will, uh, move on to, um, I guess Dylan, if you want to give us, uh, the Meadow Road, Indian Trail, and the Cherry Lane projects updates.
All right, so the Meadow Road, uh, project, that side is complete, the only thing that is left to do is, uh, repaving, uh, which will be conducted when Indian Trail is complete. We're going to do Indian Trail and Meadow Road at the same time. Uh, Indian Trail, they are in the grass side of, so north side of, uh, Buchanan Young, they're getting ready to start on Indian Trail, tentatively Monday, depending on weather, depending on when we're looking at getting the boring company up here for the force main.
And you let the.
She won't be elected by it all.
All right, great.
Um, and then anybody have any questions regarding Indian Trail?
Can I, can I make one comment on that?
Sure.
Augment, so, um, I know there was, uh, the road closure on Meadow was an issue, so just be advised, be aware, um, closer, once we get the sewer line in, that's everything's tied in when we go to pave. So, we're going to have that same issue, not for a long period of time, but, um, to pave that, uh, it will require segmented road closures, just.
From what Hyatt was saying, they were planning on paving the whole road at one time, and they're going to eight hour, roughly, be right, close.
So, just, just to be aware that, I mean, it'll, the finished product will be fantastic, but there will be one more little bump.
There'll be some pain to get there.
It won't be, it won't be, you know, a week.
It'll be three weeks.
Pick a good weather day.
Well, um, we trust you'll see us through it.
Uh, Cherry Lane has been paved back. Are you been down there, Judy?
Yeah, it's a lot better, thank you.
Good. Uh, and then, let's see here, so Heather and I spoke with, this is the update regarding our wastewater treatment plant, uh, long-term and intermediate, uh, plan. So, we got a long-term plan from them. It was a little, a little pricey, uh, for everything else that's going on right now. Uh, so we, we spoke with them to try to do something in between, like an intermediate, something between, uh, what we're doing right now and how we can use, uh, a grant to, uh, provide more services and upgrades to our plant. So, um, MJ is going into it and kind of looking at options that we can do, so we're thinking about building an EQ basin to help with, uh, storage of our INI, um, and that, that'd be on the far north side of our plant. And then, uh, upgrades to the by-plant, similar to what we're doing to the river plant currently. And that, that would result in us bringing in like a temporary plant to, uh, move the waste from the by-plant into a temporary plant to do a reconstruction of our current by-plant. Um, and I think we're looking at golden leaf for that possibly.
Pu, yes, possibly, um, I mean, that's, that's our plan. Jamie's here and he could maybe speak a little more to it, but, you know, we're, we're hoping to have, um, something more finished from McGill, from MJ, um, next week. more finished from McGill, from MJ um, next week. That sort of uh, has this intermediate plan that's more within our budget and sort of gives us a phased approach to um, to taking care of some of the issues with the five plant out there.
So we don't end up where we are right now.
Right. Um, right, so um, you know, that's just an update on where we are with that. You know, s- some things, uh, it was a very, it was a very good report, gave us a lot of really good information. Um, you know, based on what she looked at, figured she looked at, about sixty-four percent of what we treat out there is INI. Stormwater, rainwater, and if the plant itself, the size of it, she feels would certainly be more than adequate to meet our needs if we, you know, could take care of those problems.
So our stormwater does go through the sewer?
It's not supposed to.
It's not supposed to, but.
That's what I thought. That's why I'm asking, because I, I didn't think it was supposed to be treated.
That's what, that's why we're having it mapped, so we can figure out where it is, and once we have it mapped, then we can look for funding to actually come up with a plan to divert as much of it as we can and disconnect those connections.
And that's why I'm reading what you sent us from the meeting the other night, it talked about the rainwater being such a problem.
Yes.
The INI being the rainwater. And the infiltration and the.
Part of it is the age, the aging of our, of our actual sewer pipes, which we have a, a new um, fill with High Country, uh, they're putting together um, a pre-application that'll go in tomorrow for another round of the CDBGI funding to take care of a significant amount of our older pipes in the sewer line west. Um, and down to the sewer plant, if we're successful in getting that grant. Um, so yes, that's, then the next step is we get some new piping that maybe see where we are there, and then certainly we want to get as much stormwater out as we can.
Did, did she, no, we did not have a good conversation forward, but did she give you any kind of indication with this intermediate phase, as to what kind of ground? That, you know, you, you would give us to, we have to look into it further?
You know, what we're hoping for um, is similar to what we've been told with the three plant, that fifteen to twenty year range. Um, you know, if we could extend the life of the five plant, of course, we've not been able to train it and look at it, and you don't know what you're going to find when you get in there, but I mean, there are some things that we definitely know are an issue, and then there were some things that we kind of thought would be a big issue, and MJ was like, no, you know, that's, if we're going to stay with this, her proposal was to tr, to change our treatment method, which would cha, which, you know, the way we treat our sewage is outdated by, I'm sure, industry standards. But to do that, there would be a lot of reconfiguring of, of the plant, you know, the three plant that we've just repaired basically become a giant clarifier, so a lot of the work we've already done would have to be removed and things changed and, you know.
I know, I know the INI boys into that a lot, but my big question for Jay, but uh, will that help us on our capacity against what we're getting at?
Right now, no, the intermediate will not increase. Well, the only thing it'll increase is like the EQ basin, so I think they were talking about like a point two. So it'd give us like two hundred thousand gallons of volume storage. We're like, I know.
Yeah. And the, the plan that she had proposed was not going to increase capacity. Uh, it was just, go ahead, no, go ahead.
The, the problem that we're going to run into, you're trying to increase capacity, which means altering the discharge permit. Part of that comes into play, they look at the INI and say, well, wait a second. That after that number of sixty-four percent is stormwater, you need to spend this money on getting that out of your system, your capacity, well with them what you got. So that's, that's the, the line you have to ride as far as increasing capacity, because they're really put a fine tooth comb on it when there's even a question of.
And what her report said was currently, you know, we have capacity to treat about um, two thousand homes, we've got about fifteen hundred customers hooked on. But if we could solve the INI problem, that amount increases to three hundred, or three thousand three hundred and thirty-three. Um, so that definitely gives us room to grow, it's just a matter of taking care of that, getting that fixed. Getting fixed, so.
Just anecdotally, both Peterson and now Meadow so far, I mean, there's been multiple either lines coming in, in the creek, there have been people with uh, quenched drains that come to a server, they just tapped into one service line because they don't really look like sewer lines. Um, sometimes there's nothing really, there aren't really a pipe there, it's just a, it's just a tunnel in the ground, so we're finding a ton of, of stormwater, uh, even springs, like groundwater that's just finding its way into the sewer system. It's just a slow process, because it's a little bit at a time.
And a little bit what we run into, and we'll see it when we, when we get ready to sort of unveil this next CDBGI, is we have some of our lines that are literally in the creek, you know, in the manholes, or when it rains, they're basically submerged. Um, and, and the water just flows into them, and you cannot use CDBGI money to do anything really in a floodway, in a flood plain, and the proposal for this next round will be a pipe bursting process, um, so we don't have to dig the trenches, which should save us a whole lot of money, but it's a, that's an issue that we're going to have to figure out how we tackle, you know, financially. Because that's, there's not likely a lot of grant money out there that's going to help us e- either elevate them, we've talked about that, I mean, there's nowhere really for them to go. You know, you'd just be relocating them somewhere else in the flood.
The problem is, and you have a sewer, sewer obviously follows the flow of water, it's the most efficient way for it to go, so that's where it's at, it's just, it's, it's old enough that it's starting to deteriorate, so your only real option unless you pay for it yourself, I mean, but to go through grant funding, it is slip lining and then uh, rehabbing and lining existing manhole. Slip lining's cheaper, but rehabbing an existing manhole and lining it, sometimes it's not cheaper.
The last one, who is about to.
Everything costs more, right?
Unfortunately.
Uh, the next thing on the list is Genesis change order, the council's uh, approved of that. Basically, uh, they did not know what was behind her wall, as Nino was saying, um, when they were saying, they were saying, blah, saying they got. Um, there's basically a bunch of hitting on the exterior wall, and it just, uh, cost labor, it cost materials. What's included on the prices increasing for that one, eight sixty-one.
So we need to uh, uh, put in that.
I'd like a motion to approve that.
Second, uh, any further discussion? Is it unanimous that we approved the change order? Unanimous?
And. Okay, so duly is requesting for an amendment to our contract payment schedule, so initially they were to be paid at the end when this whole thing is completed. With the change orders that have been put in place, we went from basically the middle of August completion date to August first, or sorry, October first completion date roughly. Um, he has completed over, I'd say over seventy-five percent of his work, the main walkway is done. Uh, it just needs to be installed by Genesis, and then he has to do two, two walkways to kick out off the main walkway. What he's requ, requesting is um, half of what he um, half of what he is owed, I guess, so we've already paid him the five thousand, he's asking for half of the remaining balance.
Okay, so we need a, a motion to approve that.
They just made a progress plan?
Basically, yeah.
And there's a resolution to.
Uh, but the, yes, right, we do have a resolution to amend the agreement.
He, he was not, he was not a sub of Genesis, was he?
No, it was a separate contract with us.
I'd like a motion to approve that.
Okay, so the motion to approve the uh.
Amendment to the contract.
Yes, the back to the payment terms, uh, you've made the motion, is there a second? One second, okay, are we all in agreement? Yes, we are, okay.
And then lastly, um, so Heather and I are discussing this, uh, and something that had been brought my attention, I've noticed frequently, is the uh, west or east Main Street sidewalk, so right by the courthouse, and then on the other side of the uh, of Main Street, the north side, all that sidewalks fall apart. Uh, there's actually a pretty, pretty bad spot right by the uh, courthouse where there's a storm drain that comes underneath, and a grate on top, it's a tripping hazard. Um, so I went out and I spoke with uh, Sam Boone, uh, hit a concrete price for what it cost to go from the courthouse uh, where that new section of concrete is, down to um, their parking lot right after that. Um, and replace the uh, pipe and the grate that sits there, as well as the north side of the road all the way down to where it dead ends, so right after the uh, business section. Including uh, the curb, which is uh, forty-four thousand nine hundred. Uh, and we then discussed a little further, seeing like, hey, what would it cost to go all the way down that side of the hill? Uh, and also the curb that runs on the north side, just to bring that lip up, so it's not tearing all that grass out and all that stuff. Uh, so the additional five foot sidewalk adds three hundred and seventy-five feet, which is additional twelve thousand five hundred. And then there would be an additional si, uh, six inch curb on the north side with ninety-one hundred dollars. Uh, and then the retaining wall, that's up there, that's three thousand, always just laying over like it is on the property at Brooke House.
Malcolm's property.
Yeah. Not asking to do anything, just a discussion about it, talk about it, if you guys are interested in going down and doing something with this. Uh, I know Heather and I discussed, maybe we talked about, talking to the county. Um, you know, they'd be interested in chipping in a little bit.
So you would give us some estimates there?
Yeah, I'd go out and get a couple more estimates on it, I was just, we got this, just something that, you know, make the town look better, there's actually a lot, I see a lot of people walking on those, on those sidewalks.
Okay, yes.
And there's a lot of potential of getting someone getting hurt on them.
I think it's worth our pursuing, so I think if you would get us some estimates, um, and bring, bring back for our review, do you not agree, board members?
Yeah, is this the side where the bank is, I mean, when you say north?
Both sides, both sides.
Oh, both sides, I know there's, I, I've always thought that on the bank side, there's a real crumbly side, sidewalk over there, just, it rolls under your feet.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And people are doing a lot more walking, so it would be good if we address this, so why don't you get back with this on the official estimate? Dylan? Okay, so that would be very good, thank you very much, good and forth. Uh, I guess Heather, that moves us to you, so.
Okay. Bring it a little bit, so here's, here's good news, here's good news, the, I think enough large municipalities racing came down in Raleigh or something, and, and, and they went back to the counties and said, we're giving you all this coronavirus money, uh, and they had initially said counties could just share it as they wished. But they've gone back now and said, no, you have to give municipalities twenty-five percent of your total allotment, so they, the, the counties received one payment, and then now they've received a second payment. So our allotment, our twenty-five percent of what Nancy County has received is um, two hundred and twenty-three thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Okay, good news.
And that is very, six hun, yeah, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars, that's very good news. Uh, what we have to do by tomorrow is submit a plan to the county uh, for how we are going to spend this money. I've done several Zoom meetings um, with the North Carolina uh, pandemic recovery office, and they tell you basically how you can spend it, you can't spend it on anything. Um, we will be spending um, on the plan, eleven thousand six hundred and sixty-three dollars on public health expenses, which, you know, will be sanitizing machines, um, cleaning products, things to keep our, you know, the town center and the town hall and our other facilities clean, um, and some PPE also. Uh-huh, yeah, and then um, the largest portion of the money, two hundred and six thousand and five dollars will go towards payroll expenses for public safety. Um, so that's your police, fire, those, those sorts of things, you're allowed to expend it on that. Um, for the period of March first through December thirty-first, actually, they're talking about expanding it, but.
We've got it figured out.
We've got it figured right now, in the March, December. And then six thousand um, is being um, for expenses associated with economic support, uh, and um, that's pretty much looking at pay, yeah, we have some payroll situations where people have to be out, and we have to give them, by law, we have to give them fourteen days of um.
Quarter.
Yeah.
So sidewalk repair wasn't a lot?
Well, sidewalk repair isn't one of the options, but we need already.
Now, what if we put a.
Budgeted, budgeted for, right, budgeted for public safety, so um, it'll be, you know, this, this will help our general fund.
Yes, and we need help.
Tremendously, so what I need is an approval of the plan, and then also Lynn has sent over, which the county commissioners have already approved, an interlocal agreement that basically says we're going to give you this money, and you guys are going to spend it for approved things, and you're going to, Leslie's going to do the reporting in a timely manner that she's supposed to do.
So you need then two separate motions or one, one together?
I think you could do one together, just approval of the plan and then approval of the interlocal agreement to receive the fines. And then Leslie's going to have a budget amendment.
So you have to report on it every month, did you?
We do, we have to report what expenses we've used it for each month.
But it won't be that big, because I know what'll be done by the end of the year, so January, you know, should finish it up.
Okay, so we'll entertain a motion to cover the coronavirus relief plan, and also the interlocal agreement between the county of Nancy and us, is there a motion to approve that?
I make it, I think she makes.
Somebody else did, I think I might.
Did you make that motion, Judy, alright, and.
I said it.
And Russell and Denise and I, we agree, so thank you uh, very much, Heather. Motion carries.
That's good.
Alright.
Since we didn't want to have to, they sent us the money already, so we didn't want to have to give it back.
No, we don't.
Oh, you already got it?
Yeah, we've got it.
That's, that's a first, isn't that the first time we've been with real estate?
So there might be another round of that possibly, or?
Um, you know, I don't know. Call your national congressman, see. Uh, we'll see, I mean, it, it may, it may be, that, I mean, whatever they send down to the states, if the states send it out to the counties, then.
I guess it depends on how badly they want to get real with.
Yeah, maybe, maybe, I don't know.
Oh, Lord.
Um, next on my list is just an update on the land use plan, we had a steering committee meeting on Tuesday, uh, and Corey Osborne with High Country Council of Government, um, uh, presented the background information that he had collected about Nancy County. You should have been emailed a copy of what he's done so far, and then a summary um, of the findings, just of that, that report, um, you have tonight.
It's a pretty detailed report.
It's very detailed, there is a lot of great information. Um, I'm really super excited about this plan and what it can help us with going forward and hopefully building our tax base. Um, so uh, I just want to give you that update, because of the coronavirus and how it's hard to uh, meet and whatnot, we've changed our scheduling a little bit. Um, he is going to be conducting some info, some on the phone interviews with different sectors um, of our, our town, um, realtors, bankers, developers. Um, and then he will also be putting together a survey that we will eventually put out online um, to get some more public input, um, because it just, we're not in a position right now, at least, to have a big meeting and invite the whole public in, so you'll be hearing more about that, and we still are on target to have a. And we still are on target to have the plan finished by January of next year, which um will give us the time to get it adopted and then um get the changes made for our um zoning ordinance in compliance with the new one sixty D um statute. So that is the update on that. If anybody's got any questions, I can try to field them. And anybody wants to reach out to Corey, he's glad to help.
I think the summary of the findings is very well, I mean, it's a lot of information that's very well stated.
I thought the uh, the comment on our, about the overall median sewer rates, where it showed that ours was, you know, really on the low side, that uh it would justify raising our sewer rates, that we could easily justify raising our sewer rates. You know, the median uh rate at the state, especially with all the expenses we now have. Um, having purred with our sewer. That um, you know, we're right at the lower uh end of the curve of median sewer rates. I thought, heck, we could justify raising our sewer rates. We've raised our water rates for the last five years.
Well, and for us, the water, the water rate increase also increases the sewer side.
Yeah, but, but they're even.
Right, they're even.
And so our, but our sewer rate, I thought, well, you know, heck, we could just, why not? Why can't we just raise it a little bit? Because lord knows, and everybody knows, I think, the trouble we've had, I mean, it's pretty obvious. So we could easily justify raising the sewer rate, they don't always have to be even. At least that's my two cents worth.
Well, that's something for us to consider, I should. Um, any other comments about that? So we, do we need Heather to go to the uh utility?
Yeah, next is the utility payment plan update. So uh at the end of July, July the thirtieth, the governor's restriction and prohibition on disconnection of utilities um expired and he let that expire. Um, the caveat in the executive orders was that once it expired, people were allowed for the months between March thirty-first of twenty twenty and July twenty-ninth of twenty twenty, um, utility providers had to provide a um payment plan, a six, for six months, to anybody who had delinquencies during that period of time. So that's been another long process with the Zooms from the school of government because what you effectively did, you had, you had individuals who had a delinquency prior to March thirty-first, so they're in group one, they could be disconnected immediately. Then you had group two, which were that group of people who had delinquencies between March thirty-first and July twenty-ninth. However, a lot of times you had overlap between group one and group two, and then you had group three, which were people who had incurred delinquencies after July twenty-ninth. Um, and so we had to come up with these payment plans and I know I'd come to you before with the payment plan and then he extended it for another several months, the order for another several months. So we've updated all of that. Um, we have been monitoring um the situation all along. We're certainly not as in anywhere near as bad a shape as some of the other places are. Most of our people have been paying, um making their payments. Uh, did have a gentleman today come in and sign up for a payment plan. Um, and we expect, we're going to be sending out, we sent out notifications when the order expired to those who would be just in group one. Um, and just let them know, you need to come and take care of your bill because you are, the order has not expired and we would be able to disconnect you. And we've had some people come in and pay. Um, then we have the group two people, um, and we are working to get out um another notice in this next, I think we'll send it out tomorrow ahead of our water bills, giving them to the end of the month to come in and put a payment plan together. Um, and then, you know, group three, it's just the current, current bills and those that may, may become delinquent from, from there on out. But Jamie and I have had some conversations about um some of the money that the COVID-nineteen response fund um has and if we, the town could um have some of our customers who are struggling because not only will they have to pay on their payment plan, but they have to keep their current bill ongoing. And some of them have quite hefty bills facing them. Um, so uh we've been talking about what we can do to maybe uh set up some kind of a relief fund on the water, water bills. And I'll let Jamie talk me through a little bit about that.
Sure, I'm happy to. Um, Heather and, and I had, to her credit, she was pretty proactive about this even before the law recorded it would expire, we all knew it wasn't going to last forever, mutually it would expire. Certainly, it's something that's concerning to me, from an economic development point of view, because, well, it has two impacts. Hey, you've got people who are out of work, who've been laid off, who can't make their bills, that's an ongoing concern for us. We certainly want to give any assistance to those folks if we can. And of course, best revenue that's not coming into the town, that's not ideal for us either in the economic development world. We'd like for you to be able to continue to maintain, improve your water and sewer system so for these minutes, or as soon as we can continue to hook this along to, uh, if we have folks who are building residential or commercial uh property development here. So um, the Nancy Management Foundation, which is a nonprofit arm of the N C E C, was established several months ago when this whole thing started, a nonprofit COVID relief fund. We actually set up two funds, I'll sort of talk about both of those with regard to the utility fund. Uh, we made a first pass of grants for the money that we raised several months ago, collaborating with Homebase Beer and, and, and Grading, um, and Sea Canyon Rangers, you know, the event that's coming up uh at the end of this month. We've raised about forty-five, fifty thousand dollars already uh of funds for that COVID relief, the nonprofit that I continue to seek. Pledgees come in for that and, and expect that money will go up, certainly regrettable for those um corporate citizens here of ours who, who work with us to put that thing on, it's going to be a great event. Um, Heather had identified to me in our conversations we had sort of around, can you see and looking at your bills, what sort of dollar figure we're talking about, about those folks who are residential customers, who might need some assistance? And Heather, would you, am I correct in thinking it was around ten thousand or so dollars?
It was at one time and we, it, it has changed a little bit. I think it maybe have, has decreased a little bit because we've had some, some people come in and make payments, but that, that would be in the ballpark.
I mentioned to my board that um when we last met, two months ago, um, or a week ago, actually, that we would like to, to establish portion of this money to go into a utility relief fund. Basically, so you could tell these customers as you send these notices out, if you're suffering a hardship, there's assistance for you, this is where you go to go get it. My board is, is open to the appropriation of, of ten thousand dollars of that money for that purpose. What we need to figure out is to how to get it out. Um, there are some utility assistance programs already with Department of Social Services and we've talked about whether that's a good fit or not. There's some utility assistance that, that is available through Rec House, through their program. Um, I have asked Heather to join my board on a meeting that I'm going to set up for the twenty-fourth at five. Um, so that we can discuss two things really, how we're going to put the second round of grant funding out for the money that we have raised and then how do we want to set up this utility assistance fund? Uh, I wanted Heather to join us so she could tell us really the nuts and bolts about what she sees about what will be most useful. We don't want to set it up in such a way that it's a windfall for folks who don't need it. I hate to, to put it in those terms, but we really want to target for folks who are are, are really desperate and because of the, of the pandemic, uh, and their employment, unemployment situation. As far as commercial customers go, and there may be some of those folks who are, are in um a bit of a bind as well, this money would not be for commercial customers, but I would remind, commercial customers, and, and certainly when we put a press release out about this, that we still maintain that COVID relief loan fund through E D C. And we've continued to make loans and have loans repaid back through that, so that fund is pretty flush as well. If you have commercial customers who have a situation with disconnection, though they wouldn't be able to apply for this residential relief, they can still come to us through the May Coalition and borrow funds that they may need or any assistance they're facing as far as utility uh struggles they may be having. So, more to meet on the twenty-fourth, hope to finalize a plan then, and then we'll put out some press uh advice about how that will work and where the money will go and um how folks can access it. And when you guys are sending out bills or information about payment plans, you can directly target those water customers that you have and say, here's this fund if you need assistance.
Well, Jamie, not to interrupt, but I have had a couple uh ask me about, you know, the money has to be repaid and what is the interest and all that, I'm.
The, the loan fund does have to be repaid. Um, they, it accrues interest at three point seven percent. There is a deferment of payment on, on that for six months. So that if you're a business and you come and you borrow the money, it's going to accrue interest at three point seven percent. The law requires us to charge interest dollars. So we, we set it at really the lowest rate. We could just probably put it at uh when we created the program, uh, but there's no payment that's due on it for six months that lets you push it forward. Um, some of our businesses who have borrowed have received small business administration loans, they come through, they want to retire the debt that they have with us, so we've seen that money revolve actually already. And if you carry it forward, it's a three-year term, I think.
Okay, that's good to know.
Um, if anybody has any other questions about that, um, been searching for what we're going to call, what were we going to call this? Electronic, what was it Chad? Alert system. So um, the billing uh collections office has been working to get our um alert system routed.
Yeah.
And.
Collecting numbers, so if not, you need to give your numbers, uh, if you need specify, it's a cell phone or a landline. Like then the test for route one. But they're, they're building the system, that's what you have to do.
And once that's done, then we'll be able to automatically notify people of anything to do with the town. You know, weather events or.
That's going to be a really appreciative choice.
Or road closures or anything, you'll automatically get.
And when she actually sent out the test run for route one, it, it showed her actually who kicked out, so that way it's good, you know, it's down top of my name.
All right. How long would that take to, to include?
It's not that long, I think it's just actually harder for him to actually get the numbers, you know, just actually do that.
And we probably need to put out some more, maybe something on our website, some W K I page, some in the paper.
Have a lot, have a lot of people responded?
More than you assigned.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
Well, I think it's a nice service, I mean, to be alerted.
Instead of going to the, I was sitting there.
Yeah.
Okay, and the, the last thing I have is the water leak protection program with Serveline back, back before you, um, and Leslie can help me with this. When we initially looked at it, we looked at it for a pricing to have a leak protection uh in place, it's like an insurance for um water or sewer leaks. Uh, and then we went back to them and said, okay, well, what if since typically when you have a water leak, the sewer doesn't, the water doesn't go into the sewer. So we said, what would be the price? And if we just got it for water leaks and then we would adjust the sewer part portion on our side. And it wasn't a significant savings. Um, but Leslie, staff's recommendation would be to go with the thousand dollar limit. Um, because most of the leaks that we've seen have been in that range, it's been more than five hundred. Um, they've been between five hundred and a thousand and some over a thousand. And I think there was, Leslie can give you the figures exactly, but I think it was seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine thousand and forty-four in the past three years.
That we have adjusted. So the town typically, what our policy has been, if you have a leak in a twelve-month period, you get one adjustment and they adjust your bill back to what you would typically, what your typical bill would be, your average typical bill from, for a year. Um, and that's what's cost the town this close to eighty thousand dollars. Um, and this program would allow us, uh, it would charge each um customer a monthly rate, a small monthly fee, and the same thing, if they had a bill or if they had a leak, I'm sorry, within a twelve-month period, it could be adjusted that one time and the insurance company would actually pay the town their losses. Um, and then the customer would, would pay back to their, whatever their adjusted bill would be. So they would pay that. Up to a thousand dollars, once again. So if you want to give them, I said, I don't know what I did with my sheet.
Uh, well, that actually didn't affect.
Uh, that's right.
Yeah. And, yeah, here is the water, it's two point five per minute, and water inserts, maybe two thousand, whatever, any saves of that. And, and I mean, it's, it's, I mean, we, we've actually just been a lot we can collect, you know, for us actually. Yeah. That's what we're trying to pay. And, for the service. I mean, we've, we've been, well, again, about actually investing, but Nancy is really important. And we need to know if you're, you know, is it innovative? And.
Boy, if it saves this money, why would we not do it?
It, it's optional, again, if you'll remember from our previous discussions, it can be a voluntary program or it can be mandatory, put on everybody's bill. Um, and so that decision needs to be made. What we would propose is that in light of all this coronavirus and payment plans and trying to get everybody sort of back to square one, that we not actually implement the program until after January one. And that would give Serv Pro the time, or Serv Line, the time to, you know, they will do all the promotion and the advertising and the explaining of how, you know, the program works. Now, if we do make it mandatory, there is a ten percent payback to the town on those premiums of each, each month that they collect.
Did you say it was two dollars and forty-five cents a month?
It is.
To the customer?
It is.
Okay.
So, so that raises your bill twenty-nine dollars and forty cents a year.
A year.
And we were just talking about people having a hard time paying for their bills. So.
That is true, but they will have, I mean, we have some that are having a really hard time paying because they've had leaks that they've not fixed and they've been adjusted.
We just had one yesterday, like they ran the meters today, it was forty-seven thousand gallons of water leaking.
About how many do you think? Now, that's actually what she's going to call it. This is regular N C. I saw that.
What percentage of the, of people who will need to probably go to the uh payment accounts? Is it like ten percent?
Right now, we have, right now, we have, that fall within that March thirty-first to July twenty-ninth range, we have fifteen accounts.
And how many accounts total?
We have in water, yeah, a lot, a lot. We have in water, yeah, a lot, a lot more, like 15.
And so, and there's about 15 accounts.
There's about 15 accounts that have delinquencies in that period of time where we are required to offer them a payment plan. So it's not, it's not enough, but some of them have, you know, the bills can, you know, six, $700. That's, that's a lot to come up with at one time while you're maintaining your ongoing.
So. So we're talking like, probably like 1% that probably this insurance would create more of a hardship?
1%?
Well. I mean, it'd be, it'd be less than that. She's just, they're, they're just talking about, we have a group of people who are already struggling to pay, tacking another $2.45 onto their bill each month.
That's 15, that's 15,000.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, if you look at 386, it's what it looks like. That makes up that 79,000 over four years.
386 leaks.
Not different accounts, so to speak.
Now, these people that are behind on their bills, it just says some of them have 600, they've accumulated $600 in March, April, May, June. And they, they are people whose monthly bills are about how, some of them have monthly bills. Now, like my water bill is usually the average, you know.
Right.
Our base, you know.
The base rate, right. Some of them have, it's more than that.
Yeah, and some of them might live out of town, I guess, and they have the.
Yes, they would have.
That double kind of rate.
Yes, they have the outside rate.
Yeah, they have the outside rate, which is.
Double.
And that's piled up on them. So. Well, I guess, I mean, we would have to decide, is it going to be mandatory or voluntary? Right, Heather?
That is one of the criteria, yeah.
Or neither.
Or neither.
Because if you go voluntary, you have to do all the things for justice.
You do, you do.
Because it's not fair.
You know, it's not, and it's, it's a, I mean, it is, it's something they see every week. People coming in, sometimes it's, you know, repeat customers. This, this policy to work, the person would actually have to show proof they fixed the problem. Because sometimes we see that.
And just a note, this is something I was thinking about. The amount that she just said was almost $80,000 that we lost by doing that. And that's not including the cost of material that we just put in the water system. So your chlorine, your soda ash, all that stuff, that's treating the water itself that we're paying for is going through these lines. That's not including that cost.
And just another question too, because back to some of the findings from Tuesday night, a large amount of housing in Burnsville is renters. So is this possibly the lack of the renter not fixing the problem or the actual owner of?
Probably the owner of the property.
Landowners.
But I mean, to be fair, most people, we do have 30% of our houses in Burnsville are over 60 years old. But most people, you know, you don't know that your line has a roof growing through it or something, you know, you can't see it. So it's not as if it's a thing that a landlord, you know, one day you've got water coming out of your tap and the next day you've got a toilet that's leaking or somebody, you know, that sort of thing.
You don't always know if the toilet's leaking.
No.
Or like Ms. Bunny last night left her, left her, their little ditty stream of water apparently running into the laundry sink in the basement and this morning there was, and there was something, the little measuring cup she used to put the bleach in had floated down and stopped up the drain in the laundry sink. And this morning the laundry sink had overflowed and, oh my God, there was a leak in the basin. But there were no, so things happen.
Well, and there, and these, there are qualifying and non-qualifying leaks. Like washing your car, if you got a high water bill for that or filling up your swimming pool, those things are not going to qualify. I mean, it has to be, there has to be some kind of legitimate leak. And we have that policy too. I mean, that, you know, if you leave your sprinkler running for three days while you're in pigeon forwards, we're not going to.
This group actually comes out and determines that, that's not on us, right?
My understanding is it is not on us, that they would have to, that, well, we don't have any discussion with them. This is, and they'll, they'll take you through the process. Do you have that?
They filed, alright, so the customer calls with the high water bill, get their information and initiate claim. And then they send it to the patient and it's processed, claim meets their guidelines. Then the customer's notified. Then our customer receives check for, our water customer receives check for the customer's leak applied account and then.
But I believe that comes directly to us. Yeah, so they directly pay it to us, they don't pay it to them.
Well, I think it's really great that they process the claim.
Yeah, we don't have anything to do with that.
Most of the time, the client's not going to cover the whole thing anyway.
Well, that's why we try to keep it to 1,000.
And how many customers, how many people did you say was over 60? Most of them is probably on social security.
No, 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 I said they're, by age of their home, we have 30% of the houses inside the city limits, according to Corey's figures, are over 60 years in age.
But the customers, a lot of them are older.
Some are, for sure, for sure. I mean, we definitely have an older population, that's no doubt. And, but we do have 50% of the people living in the city limits are renters too. So, you know, I would, and this is just anecdote, it doesn't, I don't have any facts to back it up necessarily, but I would say most of the older people are people who own their own homes and the renters probably are somewhat older. But it is, yeah, it is overaged in a way, there's no doubt. You know.
Well, I would hazard the guess that if, if we have sat, I think it would be a good thing for the town because if we could recover money we've lost. But we have sat around and talked about this for so long. If we do, and perhaps if, if, if the company handles the PR in the right way, explains it well, and if we make it mandatory, people will understand what that $2.45 is all about on their bill and they will have enough explanation to understand it and be able to pursue it in the right manner if they have this big water bill and it was caused by a leak. On the other hand, they may be so confused. I'm sorry, they may get so confused and they have a big water bill and maybe some of those same people get another big water bill and it won't be covered and they'll be irate and, I don't know. I'm not sure it's going to wind up with a happy ending. That's just my.
Well.
Take on it, but it might be that we should just try. Well, that, that was what I was going to say. I mean, it seems like I would favor us giving it a try.
I don't know if you can. I mean, I think it'd be for a period of time.
Well, I mean, but couldn't we establish a trial period with them? I mean, like, I don't mean like 30 days or, I mean, a couple of years to see how it really does work. I mean.
I, I mean, that's certainly something we can ask the company, what their, I don't think it's, I mean, there's no, I don't think there's a definite. It may be in a year.
You did say Weaverville had been happy with it, was it Weaverville?
Weaverville has this, this protection program in place, they do. They have a lot more water customers than we do, they've got a lot more people than us, so their, their price. There's. I cannot remember, Brian, are you still there at the beach? Did we, was Weaverville's mandatory, their water protection?
I believe it is, I can find out in one second upstairs.
Yeah, and I, because, because we did look at the policy they put in place.
I thought you said it was.
I think, I think it was mandatory.
I mean, it seems like a three-year, I don't know if they'll allow us this, but a three-year trial period would be worth pursuing just to see.
Well, it may be a shorter period of time than that, I don't know. I'm sure that they are sitting there saying, we're not going to spend a whole lot of time putting out information and since they carry that whole load, it doesn't have anything to do with us. But, you know, for, for six months, but we certainly can talk to them and come back in September with more information.
She said, she thought it was, but wasn't 100% sure.
Okay.
Her department.
I think it is, that it, that it, that it is mandatory. But their price point is lower because they have more customers, you know.
But we should wait for this whole, well, that's why it's January.
And the quote they gave us was good for 30 days, but we talked with her this afternoon and she said, I, we will definitely extend whatever we understand, you know, that there's a lot going on right now. And so we don't, again, don't have to make the decision tonight, we're just bringing you more information than what we have and what our recommendations would be based on what the billing staff sees.
Well, Heather, I wonder if it were to implement it, say come January, how much time do they need for us before then?
Well, that was one thing that she did mention, that. But I mean, if it's not until September or if you want to make a decision a day or night tonight, we can tell her it doesn't.
I, however, do think it should be one way or the other, I don't think it should be optional, I think we should just do it. Like it, mandatory.
Yes.
Yes, I think it should be mandatory too. I could, I think it could get very weird if we don't just make it mandatory.
Well, I think you would, if it wasn't mandatory, you would have people showing up that didn't spend the $2 that would say, I won't mine, I won't mine adjusted and then that, you know. Yeah, you used to adjust it and, but there again, I mean, the price of chemicals for treating our water is.
Our line item is $100.
Well, I mean, water is not, good water is not cheap.
I mean, our, our line item for that, just for the count, is $100. If you take that consideration, if someone had a leak of, say, 40,000, 37,000 gallons for a normal user, 37,000 gallons extra, which is just being wasted.
Well, and we're, we're paying for that anyway. Our water bill tends to be the, the worst, but anyway.
Yeah, but if you lose 37,000 gallons, 37,000 gallons, not even.
Well, I wonder how we, maybe, maybe we would table a vote until our September board meeting, but I wonder how we, we are steering, I mean, how, how you feel about it, if you mind voicing your thoughts now? I mean, maybe it would give us a chance to see, maybe there's some questions that are not answered that we should get asked better at our school, I mean.
I would, I would personally participate myself, however, I would not vote for it. I just think, I just think that it's going, we don't hear a lot of fight. I would personally participate.
Okay.
But I would, I would have to say.
Okay, Judy?
I would personally not participate and, I'm not for that whole thing.
Okay.
But, but I do agree with Bunny, I don't, I don't think it would be optional because I think that would, it would make your head ache.
So.
So I do, I do agree with you in that aspect, it should be one way or the other.
Okay, so Judy, any particular reasons why you are totally against it?
I have looked and looked at it, I'm just confused with the figures, that's like 2.45 a month. It, I'm just, I just have a gut feeling about it, I just don't like it.
Okay, well, that's your prerogative. Denise?
I'm kind of leaning more towards agreeing with doing the mandatory and looking more into it. I would personally definitely sign up for it and I think there's, I, I think the benefits may outweigh some of the negatives, but I'd like to, you know, with the work report again, because it has been a while since I did look at that.
Okay.
Well, I'm sorry.
No.
Go ahead, Heather. I, I think that it maybe will confuse people. No, no, I think it might just, it might confuse people, I think it should be mandatory if we do. It's going to save us money, I think that would be good. But we should not do it without it being mandatory. We should wait till after the COVID crisis passes and Lord, I hope that's going to be not another year because of this thing with people's water bills. I don't think it's too much to ask, that's not a lot of money, $2.45. But I still think, and I'm honest in this, if we're going to raise anything, I think we ought to charge more for sewage. I truly didn't, because we're in a big time with our, I mean, we've got a lot of expenses associated with our sewage now, but, you know, like you said, we are creating water that we don't need to. It's going right through the sewer. But I think if we want to raise any kind of a rate, maybe we ought to raise, uh, charge more for sewage treatment and put it in our monthly bills.
There is one additional option that Dylan and I have talked about, this adjustment. It's not a written policy, it's just a policy that has been a policy. We could develop some written policies and we could say, we're not giving adjustments, you know?
Or maybe not forgiving the whole bill. Why do we have to forgive the?
We could have a set dollar amount or we could say, you know, we'll reduce your sewer side because we aren't treating what was leaked, but we need the water bill. I mean, I'm just, I'm not advocating one way or another, I'm just saying that's another option to having an insurance program would be to, to just say, if you have a water leak, you've got a water leak. And we can adjust you on the sewer side, but we can't.
Adjust you.
We can't adjust you.
And that way you're not charging everybody, just the person.
Just the person who has the misfortune of having the leak, you know.
And a lot of times you don't know it until your bill comes.
Yeah, you don't know it until your bill comes. Unless as I was bubbling up in your yard, you don't know it until your bill comes and I, you know. Yeah.
It's going to be a lot that you say when you get your bill and you had more.
Yeah, and so, yeah, that was one thing that we clarified, it would cover a two-bill period because if your leak occurred mid-bill, you would say, oh, I've got a leak, but you would have already had maybe some more period of time that you had been.
And that may be the center of town, it may be a gargantuan bill and maybe I can pay part of it one month and part the next or something.
Well, that's another thing, we could offer, you know, people payment plans or we could offer some adjustment on the sewer side, it's just, it is increasingly costly to treat water. And we do have, I mean, we have sewer treatment plant and line issues, but we also have how much, I mean, we're getting a water audit done when? When, when did you set that up? Oh, no, the leak.
You're talking about the basins?
No, you had somebody that was going to come and look.
You were going to come and look at a crack in the water flung in.
Well, two things, that's what I was talking about. So, yeah, structural engineer came out and looked at it, the settling basin, which is, we don't have a price for this and a cost. Showed us what was wrong with it, obviously we don't have the funding to go out and have it all fixed. And then we have Keith Buff with Real Water Association, he's going to come up and he's going to walk our whole system. I know last time we did a water audit, we had a, I have a number in front of me, I think it was over 40% water loss.
Oh, yeah.
So that's anything from leaks on our end to customer leaks.
And meters, I mean, the metering program, having the new meters probably will help with that some. But, you know, we're not far behind on the water side of things from where we are on the sewer side right now. we're not far behind on the water side of things from where we are on the sewer side of things right now.
Well, because somebody was gonna come and with something that, an instrument they use more things, try to detect leaks.
Correct, that's Keith Buff.
He's coming. Donald's already got that set up.
Okay, well.
Is there any way to put this out here where you got some phone line back from residents? I mean.
Well, would, would they do that in their publicity though, before, I mean?
I mean, we could put it on, we could put it on their bill, I mean. And I've talked to people the same thing who have had a leak and said, I would participate, um, be glad to do that, but then, you know, that's not, it's not everybody. So, we certainly could try to get something back.
Well.
I mean, and we could have, before we, we did it, we could have a public hearing, you know?
Heather, that's what I was leaning towards is that would these people, I mean, the company, would they not do like full page ad maybe that explains it and then we have a public hearing on it?
I don't know about that. I know that they have offered to send a representative to come, merge on us via WebEx and, and, you know, make, make comment, uh.
Well, I think in order to get some good, to get people interested enough would be a story about it or a page, full page, the pro, you know? And then list the public hearing. I mean, I do think Russell that, but you know, I think just saying we're gonna look at and not give information out for people to think about before they come. That's why I think a full page ad would be really very helpful.
Or we could put something, we got a lot going on water bills this month, but we could put, because we've got all the census stuff too, so we could put something in the water bills and say, here's something that's offered, would you give us your feedback? And give them the, um, the dedicated public comment email with God, please do that or they could call.
But I mean, if, well, let's say you put something in the, the billing and we need your input and your thoughts and zoom in to a public hearing, don't you think we get some participation? They read the facts? But I mean, does this company not put out like a full page that we could insert for them that lists, I mean, the information about it so we don't have to create ourselves?
Oh, I'm sure they, they would give us, you know, they would give us.
And that way, I mean, if it's in the water bill, it goes out to them, everybody with, and we have a date to to zoom in maybe for a public hearing on it, because that way we look at their, I think people would zoom in and let us know whether they really like it or it sucks.
They'd let you know on the telephone within thirty minutes.
Yes, right.
Water bill, I mean, really, you would, you would know.
If they read it.
Well, I mean, but maybe.
Well, you need the one for it too.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, you won't get that from the.
Well, we might, I mean, we might get them to zoom in. I mean, I think people would give us some feedback.
I would like to do that. I mean, I would like to see go out to the, to the residents and just see what.
Get some feedback. Okay.
I, I'd like to make the assumption that we do do the, we ask this company to give us just a one page that it's not so much that you, you know, you can read one page.
Right, they get sent this.
I mean, I was making a motion, so I'll, uh, move on.
And we really, uh, we don't know that we need, we don't know that we need a motion. We just need direction, just direct staff that to, to explore if we can get some public information out to.
Well, I want us, I don't think, we want, I think, I want us to get some pub, some information out in the mailing and set a date where they can zoom in to us, give us their.
We're gonna have to, um, cause, cause zooming is, is not, you can't just do that there, buddy. Cause you have, you have, I mean, there's a limit, right? There's just so many people you can zoom with.
We could do our pu- public hearing like we do public comment.
We could. We can do it like, like we did for the, for the budget.
But I think we need to hear from the people.
Yeah.
Could we have that in September, our regular meeting?
It's two weeks away.
We might have to do a, a, a separate date in September that we would do like.
Dedicated just to that, maybe.
I, I think dedicate just to that and that would be a time for it to go out to ask the company to give us a page of information that we can put in for people to read and a notice about the date that we'll have the public hearing.
Could we take action at the public hearing?
There isn't for that.
There is enough time.
There is enough time.
Cause the water bills don't go out till next week.
Well, I'd like to see a story in the paper done about it and that in your.
On that joke.
I, no, I mean, you know, I mean, this, excuse me. I'm not finished. That, that flyer is available at town hall as well as it will be sent out in the mailings to the, the water res, uh, the residents who now, therefore, it's, it's a story that covers it, Jody, and you would have information from the company that's, you know, and then the public hearing date. I mean, I really think public hearing is gonna be credible for us. And otherwise, there are people who are maybe misunderstand and think, oh, this is another way to trick us into a higher bill.
If you're going to have a public hearing, do you want this representative to be there?
Oh, yes.
Well, then don't you have to establish that?
Yeah, and we'll have to talk to her about, cause I think, uh, her company may be limiting her travel. She may have to zoom in.
Well.
Cause she's from Chattanooga, Tennessee.
You know, we're not, we, our goal is to hopefully implement it if we do it beginning in January. We've got enough time to do that. I think it's a major step in, frankly, I think in the right direction, but we may decide, you know, we're not gonna do it after we get a lot of feedback. I just think that's credible. New story, something in everybody's bill and, um, we just go with it.
What time, what date is the October meeting?
Go with it.
Okay, well, if you want to put it on the third, we'll put it on the third.
Oh, the third of September? And that's not enough time.
We have enough time to add. If you want to do an article and all of that.
I think we should go away with the October board meeting and have a public hearing. Cause I read September's gonna work. Uh, is there a motion to that that we would, I would like to see it.
I make that motion.
Yeah. Whatever it was, did you want?
I'll never close it.
Well, I mean, I just.
Whatever you said.
The, the news story, the insert by the company that goes into the newsletter so it doesn't burden the girls or anyone else who is very busy and, uh, we have the public hearing and let's see who comes. October, and Brian up there at the beach will be back. Is, is there a fan blowing behind you?
This is, I'm on my porch. That's, that's Buke Ridge back there and.
His arm disappears every now and then.
Okay, so I made the mo, she made the motion and did anybody second it? I think Denise did. Did second it. Are we all in agreement for that?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes, Mike.
Okay, so we'll see how the moth flops and Jody, you work on a very, you're not gonna work on a story for us?
I've got teen stories I'm working on right now.
Well, this is not till October.
One's water sewer, that's second.
Well, I know, but this.
That's hard to explain.
Oh, my God.
Well, I mean, I, I really, maybe you could technically, the flyer and.
You all can put, I don't, put together whatever you want to.
Thank you. Thank you, Jody. Okay, let's move on. I would take, I mean, it's, it's, but it's important. Clean water is important, so, okay. Uh, where are we?
Department updates. Department updates.
Okay, I will move on.
Jenny has her tax settlement documents.
Okay, um, I've given you, and that's, um, I think the blue paper, the chief of finance, the settlement. But I've asked you to, um, that blue paper first, because that's where the solvency is, and that's the component of, um, the, of previous tax settlement.
So, do we need to review first the insolvent report?
Um, yeah.
Insol, the insolvent report's only on personal property that hasn't been collected. We haven't been able to collect since it's more older, the earliest would be.
Two thousand and ten.
Two thousand and ten, yeah, yeah.
But there are twenty-two, um, tax bills there that are allowed to report for fifty-six. And we're allowed a statute to remove the personal party taxes and a number of issues that has to be.
So.
You see what is in that space.
So, we, we need a motion to honor that request. Okay, so is there a motion that we approve the insolvent list officially or twenty nineteen twenty two?
I make the motion that we approve insolvent list.
All right. Is there a second duty, duty? Okay, are we all in agreement?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so that's gonna prove.
Okay, then going back to the, um, the second page of the Chicago, there shows what we, I mean, last year, which is on the top line, the base was four eight two. And we plan to offer the one thousand four hundred sixty seven dollars.
Hey, that's great.
Um, so. Um, as part of the settlement, I'm required to, um, you know, show you those to the, those group members and also as a settlement, so if you, um, have to approve instead of, it's an issue of this question.
Yeah, just approve the annual settlement.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the annual settlement?
I'll make that motion.
It's second, it's second by Russell. Are we all in agreement? Okay.
Okay, the last problem is to, um, anybody. And I, the last thing there is, um, the last page is, is, uh, it's exactly about seven hundred sixty-two thousand two hundred dollars in, in the taxes that we expect you to see that other person. It doesn't reflect what we have until we franchise, um, taxes that, when we figure that in.
And then they have to, um, issue the order to collect.
Yes, that was next. I was gonna ask for a motion and a vote for all of the tax collect, to collect. So, is there a motion? Okay, is there a second to the motion? Uh, and Russell, Brady and Bud, yes, we're all in agreement. Thank you. Okay, that moves us to, uh, thank you for your report. I guess Leslie, we're next to you, please.
Okay, uh, I seen that budget versus action, um, earlier in the report, um, anybody have any questions? And I have the, uh, budget. And it is, I'm confused. Uh, because I. Okay, so the first line from revenue is established for the COVID nineteen funds, the revenue line. Then the, so this is in the general fund. And then same thing, it's the general fund, the ten, second line, and that's a miscellaneous revenue. And do you remember when the, whoever actually done the damage to the West Main, this parking lot? Okay, so we got the insurance check from then and then we have the bill now too. So, but this is to recognize that insurance check I had in the budget. So that's the second line. The third line is just this small part, this five thousand, when we were talking about the COVID funds. And just offset some of this other, you know, there's a little bit out there, but we might, you know, first, first element of the math. So that's for that. Down here, um, back to the same thing, keeping with the first line and the first line of expenditures is the COVID nineteen expenses. And I mean, first about the same, two eighteen, six sixty-eight. And then the second line is municipal parking lot repair, uh, same thing, thirty-six thousand nine seventy-seven eighty-six on the expenditures and then thirty-eighteen sixty-one hundred for last line COVID expenses and that's five thousand dollars.
Okay, so. Oh, would, do we, we don't need a motion on that, just not a motion made? Okay, so the budget, excuse me, liberal, a budget amendment. Uh, so, is there a motion that we approve, uh, the budget amendment?
I make that motion. We approve the budget amendment.
We're all in agreement, yes. Okay, Leslie's an international. That's been important. Thank you very much. So, I believe that concludes, uh, finances. Am I not correct? Again, that's, okay. So that, that moves us onto our fire department. Well, how did you do that? You're now behind a different. Good lord, did you drop?
It's been out in class. He's the outlaws, dialing.
Never a dull moment with you two. Uh, okay, fire chief, we like your backdrop.
Well, thank you. The, uh, operation side of it, we did have a large number of calls last month. We had sixty-two last month. About double what we usually have. Well, most of it was weather related for the most part, road hazards and MBAs, fire alarms going off because of the rain, we had, that's what caused most of the increase and that we're up to two hundred and forty-six house for that. We, uh, are still working on getting all of our hose testing completed. We still lack all of our large diameter, our five inch supply line, but the rest of it's been done. Hopefully that will finish off all our maintenance for the, for the, we did have to do some truck repairs and some problems with the, our main pumper and then we had it repaired. And so we're, we're ready for whatever at this point in the game. The, uh, building update. Down here about the BLE report, Russell may know more about this than I do, but from the looks of the report, it looks like the cementation work did what it was supposed to. Uh, I do think, as we said, they're probably asking for a little more money because of the extra inspections. So, but I don't know if they formally requested that have that happen.
They did. They formally requested it. They sent a letter, um, asking and, and I told them we would put it on tonight's agenda. And then Leslie has done a project ordinance amendment. They're ask, asking for an additional five thousand and twenty-five dollars. Um, they had initially budgeted seven thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars for all of their, um, materials inspections, uh, and they've spent to date five thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars and seventy-five cents and we just got dirt before. So they've, they've inspected our dirt as closely as it can ever be inspected. So they're anticipating that everything else they have to inspect is gonna run another five thousand dollars approximately, so.
So we need a budget amendment for that.
It's not a budget, it'd be a project.
A project, I speak.
And this is.
This is BLE, they're, um, metal lammens engineering and they're the soil testing and they also will test our concrete and what else will they test, Russell?
Asphalt.
Asphalt.
So it's a budget amendment to the project ordinance?
Yes.
Is there, okay. Any questions about that? Well, how say you?
We have to.
A motion and a vote. Is there a second to that? All second, okay. And we're in agreement. Well, we don't, but we have to make it official. Okay.
Then I guess the only other thing now is our, the report from BLE on our dirt. It's finally good.
Well, that, and what did that cost us in here? Never mind. A pretty penny, okay.
How much, how much, uh?
We can't talk about it.
It's nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Okay, any other questions for now about our fire department project?
Let me just give you about where we are.
Okay, that would be good.
I talked with Randy Banks a few times earlier in the week. We are waiting right now, the metal building people who are putting in the bay part of the building are scheduled to deliver the building twenty fifth of August. Waiting on their concrete, uh, portion of their company coming for the pad for the bays. He did a job in Richmond and he was trying to finish it up and get, we've been looking for him for about a week and a half now. So he's not made it yet, uh, maybe it's a little closer, actually seeing something be done. Uh, the power company did put in the temporary, temporary electrical service and they still have to move a couple of foam cones over there to get them out. Uh, the power company did put in the temporary electrical service and they still have to move a couple of foam cones over there to get them out of the, the apron, uh, of the buildings out. So I've agreed to do that. And we'll have to coordinate across the water line and some things shortly, I suppose, and, and see when that needs to go in, we'll decide. And that's where we are, we're kind of waiting on the concrete to pass right now.
I, I was amazed in driving by not long ago with it all cleared and nicely packed, that is a very large field, I didn't realize it.
It's very large, it's still in a very big mountain.
It's a big mountain.
True, well, that's a good report, Niles, thank you very much. Any questions for Niles before we move on? Okay, thank you very much, Niles. All right, Mr. Police Minister, there is a fan blowing behind you, cause your shirt flutters.
No, it's, it's the tide is coming in, I'm sorry. But, uh, as far as my report, I'll try to make it brief. Uh, we've got, uh, it's been normal operations with the police department. We've been blessed to stay Corona free at this point, hoping to stay that way. Uh, more operations for our office to go. Uh, everyone here time clocks, talk about, we've got the time clock, the new time clock fully implemented with the police department and it's operational and it seems to be functioning well. Uh, we've got time clocks up, time clocks up at maintenance and at the water plant, they're still kind of, we call the testing phase, just checking their numbers versus the old time clocks before we take the old time clocks out. I think, uh, Jackie went to run that for another, another pay cycle to make sure that the person matching on. And then, uh, we'll see about just, uh, switching over to the new system. Uh, as far as zoning, uh, we had a meeting on Tuesday night and, uh, project, uh, 315 West Main Street was approved to go ahead. Uh, that's the place building beside Home Place and it's just, uh, an upgrade to the building as well as a addition of a, uh, a deck on the east side of the building, which hopefully is gonna make the property more attractive to potential businesses, customers, uh, someone to rent out that building, as I understand. And, uh, spoke with Randy Banks yesterday and he said they'll start that next week. And the other thing on my list is the code enforcement. Uh, if y'all may have noticed, the, uh, property on West Main Street near Fast Stop, the, they've had a piece of equipment down there for the last little bit. They have been cleaning up, uh, the property itself. The three sided building is still there. Uh, the last, I spoke with the, uh, owners, that, that they have plans on taking that down and maybe eventually putting something else in there, but that hasn't happened yet. But the piece of equipment is still there, so I'm hoping that's all will be part of the same project of cleaning up, what was taking that building there.
How much longer is that gonna take?
Uh, the cleanup part is pretty, I mean, they've got it pretty well done as far as the stuff that was, uh, outside of our, uh, what I, what was allowed in our codes on the property. Uh, I don't know if they started to be, be part of the building down, it may take a period of time. We still have, still have some stuff supported inside there, so they might be looking to remove that first.
Okay. Any questions for Brian? Thank you, Brian, very much.
Absolutely.
Uh, catch three one out, Chad, with the luxury of news.
Unfortunately, things have not improved. And we've got five more weeks to face to, we've canceled up almost 90 days worth of events so far. We can keep rebooking a few of them, but we keep having to cancel a lot, so we'll go till September 11th and maybe get a little bit of things approved and start having some more. Right now, it's pretty tough, we've had just a few things that will fit in, within the guidelines of the government, but very few.
So September 11th is the end of, I mean, unless you mean.
Yeah, the next day they'll make a decision.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you for keeping us posted. Um, we'll move on now to, uh, reports from any of our, our town members. Uh, Denise, I wanna compliment you on, down below, we'll get, where you can give us a search update if you wanted to, but she is on the search board now, which we're proud of that and thank you for your willingness to serve. Um, you had the Briggs parking lot?
Yes, um, finally was able to, you know, have the committee meet and we walked the parking lot. Mostly it's cleanup and hopefully a little joint project with the public works for painting the new lines and maybe paint some curves. Uh, a few little safety issues, just like maybe putting the, um, something across where you can walk up to the top. Kind of wrote that off a little bit. Um, and it kind of went along nicely with the material we got from Cory on Tuesday, that Burnsville does show that it has a parking area for our, for our town. Um, and I'm hopeful that, you know, with the cleanup of this parking lot, um, it'll be utilized a lot more, especially around the back park. There's a lot of, there's a lot of parking back there. So I thought that kind of went along nicely with what Cory reported.
Well, good, how many on your committee, uh?
Uh, there was just four.
Four, okay.
And what I had told Denise is that we would get together with some of their recommendations and, and talk to Dylan and maybe come up with some kind of a, you know, a budget or a plan on moving forward with that. I know you've got volunteers that'll do some cleanup and that sort of thing, but.
But we'll still need a little help if they become the debris away and things like that.
Well, I'm sure that could, we can certainly assist with that. I would, uh, like to, uh, for myself, comment on that the first evening of music on Fridays from four to seven was this past Friday and it was very well received. In fact, some merchants, uh, decided to go ahead and pay for some of their own music up to that time. So Denise, how did you feel about the music was? Were you in your shop on Friday?
I was, I was there until the power went out.
Yes.
Yes. I noticed that up the street, there was a little bit more walking traffic, um. I, I didn't notice anything really down West Main, but this was the first night of it and, um, it was a little looming of rain, so.
Makes a difference. Okay, um, let's see, I had something else to tell you and it's left me. Well, I'll come back to it when I think of it, um. Anyone else have anything, you, no, do, do you, don't you go to Boone?
No, I go to Raleigh.
Raleigh.
But we do everything by teleconference.
Okay. And let's see, anyone else have anything you'd like to say or share? No, okay. Well, we'll move on then to, oh, well, one other thing before I forget, moving on to Jamie's report, or the good article in the paper, which I'm sure he'll touch on, and I'm not trying to steal his thunder. I would like to remind us as a board, um, Judy and I had, were on the board when we undertook this project, Russell and Denise and Bunny were not, but just want to remind us that it was the town that, uh, took on the, call it my argyptics, the farmer's market, because they were always in need of a location. And I'm thrilled, as Jamie will report, about the county and a place for the farmer's market to become permanent. But we took them on as, as the group that we wanted to give a home to. Of course, we had a, a, another motive, we wanted them to be in town to promote town traffic on Saturday mornings. And so the parking lot for which we do pay rent, we, they'd come there, uh, to use it free on the Saturday mornings if they held the farmer's market, they're not charged. We're delighted to have them, so otherwise they were just gonna go wherever they could find a place and it would vary from year to year. So as Judy will recall, we did take them on as a project and give them a home and I think it's been very positive. So it's gonna be even more positive when they have their own location, which Jamie, of course, will, will report about. But sometimes I think the town has overlooked what we undertake to do before it becomes someone else who is able to put more time and, and of course, money into it. So, um, just want to remind you of that. So I will now move on to, uh, Jamie and we look forward to your good report, Jamie, as always.
Well, now I've got to tell you about the farmer's market. I wasn't gonna say anything, but honestly, that's exactly what I was gonna talk about. Madam Mary, it's good to be with you. Um, you heard me go on in length about more depressing things. I'll, uh, talk about two things that are, are very positive and the one, as you said, is, is the farmer's market project. We're very excited that that is about to start. Classes for those students in the IDEX lab program at Appalachian State University, who will work on that project begin next Tuesday. I actually, um, Professor Jason Miller, who is the faculty supervisor for that, uh, program, sent to me the core syllabus today, which was sent to the students who shared that. Um, so that's, uh, something we're very excited about. The way that will work, uh, is of interest to me, it's gonna give a lot of hands-on experience to those students, 20 students, 20 undergraduate students, four graduate students. They divide them up in teams of four, with the graduate student for the leader for each cohort of undergrads and they compete. Those four teams will come up with separate designs. Uh, they'll reach out to us for community input. They'll be in touch with, um, with your, with your zoning administrator and with the public works director and the county administrator. Uh, I take it in liberty of giving them all your numbers at home so they can tell you whenever they're gonna do their homework. Um, to, to actually give them the, the real experience, what it's like to decide as an architect, engineer, contractor, building, it's one of these things. Um, those four teams will compete and at some point the group of us will decide which one we like best and that will be what is built in the spring. Um, farmer's market folks are super enthused, um, certainly appreciate the town, as you say, doing what the town has done to make them as non-itinerant as possible. Uh, throughout the, the, the recent years, it's certainly important to give the department a home. And it promotes, you know, development of West Main Street there. Anything we do to link them, the pedestrian interest that we have from sort of the terminals of pedestrian shopping at West Main now, further down the street, I think is certainly, uh, a benefit to the town and, and the community. Uh, so that program will, will get rolling. It will be a few weeks before we hear from the students, their first project is actually a learning module where they learn how to use the software and how to work with each other. And they do hypothetical project first before they reach out and get in touch with us. So it's a few weeks before we actually have those students here. Uh, it will be different than we initially planned for it to be originally, they would spend a lot of time here. It's a web hybrid course now, so they'll spend a limited amount of time here, most of their interaction, that's what we need. If you like. But the goal is first time the university's done it that way, so we're the G P E, uh, we're interested to see how that goes. Um, the other positive thing that I will share with you, uh, which is somewhat encouraging news, is that looking at occupancy tax collections. For the most recent quarter, customarily, if we look at last year's figures, we were probably higher than usual. We collected about 20,000 dollars occupancy tax. For the most recent quarter, last year, we were only off a few thousand dollars. We collected almost 17,000 dollars occupancy tax this past.
That's amazing.
Past quarter now, uh, of course it comes with challenges, uh, we trust that we try to continue to, to integrate our visitors and folks who are here. They need to be socially distant and responsible and follow the three W's and so forth and so on, so that we're not creating a, a trying to cure an economic problem on one hand and creating a problem with the other one. But, um, I'm, I'm encouraged that, um, certainly participation of other folks who are in the town and trying to also keep up the effort and in public service announcements out and public education out. And continue to be mindful that while we're trying to be as open as possible, you need to, pandemic is not over. Uh, and unfortunately, uh, so those are two positives I think that, uh, I thought I shared with you. If you have any questions, but anything else.
Can you talk a little bit about the census and the Dogwood Trust?
Right, yeah, so Dogwood Trust has, has established a grant by funding for communities who participate to increase their numbers of the census by providing a grant award to them for every percentage point they increase their count. Um, SIRCE, uh, proposed to county commissioners participating with, uh, with the county, which sort of led the, the effort of trying to get public outreach out about the census, uh, some time ago, before the pandemic started. And we're all trying to figure out how you actually conduct the county, the big money in the nation, when you can't go out and ask somebody. SIRCE is participating, um, in that grant for us here, uh, and, and, and picking up, um, sort of the lead and trying to find innovative ways to reach out and connect with, um, all of the different communities we have, particularly the Latinx communities. And, and the reason to count them accurately is that we lose about 16,000 dollars every year. Um, per person for benefits and, 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 and top of programs and money that we have going out for folks who are not counted in the per capita amount of money that comes back to us. So, you know, people have different political opinions about that, but it's imperative to have an accurate count because if you don't, it's cost us money. Um, so certainly, I'm, I'm curious to see what SIRCE puts together about, um, about avenues to try to continue to figure out ways to.
One. Counts.
Do you think, go ahead.
I was just gonna say one avenue that they have reached out to me already, um, and sent me a flyer that will be in our water bill, everything goes in our water bill. And yet, in the, the next, the next round, um, they are having 1,500 of these single page, um, flyers printed to go in our water bills. Uh, and i- the information is compelling, um, for every person that's counted, that's 1,800 dollars per person that comes back into your community for, um, in the way of grants, uh, in the way of federal funding, in the way of, I'm sure some state funding that it flows, flows through for a 10 year period. So today, I saw something today that said North Carolina is predicting a, around a four or 5,000 dollar shortfall because we're not getting enough people to take the census. And you can do it online or you can do it by paper, it takes 10 minutes at the most.
It's really simple.
It's very easy to do and we definitely, we're gonna put some stuff up on our website, I think I sent that already to Chad. Because every, every federal or state dollar, as Jamie said, that we can recoup right here helps us build infrastructure, helps us serve our citizens better. So that's a lot of money, if you say 1,800 times 10.
Can you still do it on the phone, I dig up?
You can do it on the phone, yep.
Are they still talking about cutting it off at the end of September?
October.
Cause that's one of the.
October.
No, it's supposed to be October, but you know, it's powers that be. It's going to approach the idea of cutting it official, if you have a September.
I haven't heard that officially. Uh, I mean, I heard that it was talked about.
But it, uh, is that.
It is.
I think it is.
It is.
A month early, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. They're talking it, is it?
I mean, the door knockers thought they were gonna get like four or five months and now they're only gonna get like a month and a half or something.
Has it become official? 23rd of September, if it's September.
I believe it has been, I didn't think to, um, sit in on the search meeting, um, handling like a sounds like a planning board.
Okay.
The last I heard.
So Jamie, is there anything else you would like to share with us?
No, ma'am.
Good news. Thank you for your good thoughts. Um, I believe.
I hope Brian didn't eat dinner before he went snorkeling.
I wish.
You didn't send him, wait, wait until that pizza.
People are participating in that.
Now, wait. Brian has eaten supper, I saw that plate of food that came in.
It's pretty good.
Well, I saw it, but anyway.
I thought Michelle Ball's pink, uh, filter was, but no, Brian has.
Now Brian.
He's out there early.
Looks like fun fall.
I know.
Well, I have a water leak.
Yeah, we can hardly, we can hardly wait for next month's board meeting.
You gotta help Niles, he has some more. More, more options.
Okay, we will.
Too much.
How like that though? We'll move to a clo- to a closure, um, we have no need for closed session, which is great. And our next meeting is September the 3rd. And we will, um, look for the October special meeting about water programs, so, and other things. So having said that, thank you everyone for your good course, Jamie, it's nice to have you with us in the place. Having said that, thank you everyone for your difficult, Jamie, it's nice to have you with us in the flesh, instead of being up there with Brian.
I won't, oh, I don't worry, I, I think he's throwing the golf at that, I'm gonna be second.
Niles, thank you for joining us also.
Oh, no, now I'm back in the trees.
Okay, is, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
And I said, we are adjourned, thank you.